Public forum, so I'm going to read the we appreciate and welcome comments from our stakeholders as part of District 49's open forum. Please remain in your seats until a call to the podium by the Board of Education Chair. Once called upon, please approach the podium, state your name and relationship to the district before beginning. Please speak into the microphone. Written statements may be left in the basket by the podium. We ask that you not address anyone in the audience and that you and that your comments be made in a respectful and orderly manner to fulfill our values of trust and respect. We decline to create a forum of four attacks or criticism against specific staff members, students, or other stakeholders. Therefore, with the exception of members of the board or the superintendent, personal complaints against individuals connected with the school system are prohibited in this forum. File action items may be signed to the superintendent in accordance with Board policy BEDH. Open forum participation is limited to two minutes per person. It is the practice of the board to withhold any comment or direction to the superintendent until after all who have signed up for open forum have had a chance to speak. I would also like to make you aware of our grievance process. This process can be initiated by anyone in our D49 community and guides a stakeholder through the correct people and process to help resolve their concerns, including as a final step, the opportunity to formally appeal to the Board of Education. We encourage you to utilize this process if warranted, as many have successfully resolved their concerns in this way. Remember that the views and opinions expressed in public forum are those of the commentators and do not necessarily represent official policy or positions of District 49 or the Board of Education. Thank you for participating in our open forum. I'm going to call Mike Heil to the podium and Manuela Brown to the backup chairs.
Good evening, Board. Mike Heil, CLAC member and unopposed board candidate. I speak on behalf of several CLAC members who have expressed to me the importance they place on its mission and how relegating it to a subcommittee of the DAC diminishes it. The issues it was chartered to address will receive significantly less time and attention there than is possible in a separate entity. The criticisms made in the cover sheet are entirely fair and valid. The committee has not met its chartered purpose. It has experienced volatility of both membership and topics. I would like to share with you how we are making progress on those issues. First, we just passed new bylaws and are preparing to elect members of the executive team. New strong leadership that can keep us on task and eliminate distractions will go a long way towards resolving those issues. The bylaws contain an accountability system which will help us ensure decorum. Secondly, the committee voted to task the bylaws team to create a voting system that weights each of the following interest groups equally: students, staff, parents, and community. This will resolve one of the problems of membership volatility, which primarily occurs in the community group. Finally, much of our topic volatility and failure to stay on task has had a single source, whom I have in print as saying that they never believed in the mission to begin with. That individual has resigned from the committee. That person is a voting member of the DAC, and I expect them to continue to interfere with its mission if it moves over there. I close with this offer. Please consider tabling this proposal for six months. If the improvements I expect do not begin to show, I invite Mr. Hiltz to bring it forth again, and it will have my vote in support. Thank you.
And thank you. Manuela?
Good evening. My name is Manuela Brown. I'm a parent of two District 49 students, and I'm a member of the CLAC. This was my first year in the CLAC. I want to, I want to go ahead and second what everything that Mr. Heil said is absolutely true. My year, my first year on the CLAC, it was a little rough. And, but I can see we made great progress with establishing our bylaws. And I would request that we hold off combining the CLAC committee with the DAC and give us some more time to move on with the positive impacts that we had made and changes to give us the opportunity to keep working on this without further distractions. That's it.
All right, thank you so much, and we'll turn back the remainder of the time. You all know why I have to do the sign, right? When I for everybody. Treat everybody fairly. Just give them the sign. Okay, so now we're on to consent agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, and any further discussion or, I'm sorry, any further polls? No, okay, vote.
DeVola?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Now, when Rick isn't here, we're always unanimous. That passes, okay. That didn't go over well. So we're on to update superintendent. Mr. Graham, Peter Hiltz, Superintendent, I have very, very limited updates, but I wanted the board to know. I had a great meeting last, well, Thursday, October 5th. I got to meet with a group of, that calls themselves the East Side Pastors. And these are folks that pastor churches somewhere east of Powers. About three quarters of them are churches that operate in one of our schools. And so we have, we have churches in nine different schools in District 49. And so these are important partners. I appreciate the opportunity to meet with them. I wanted the board to know that I am making that outreach because these are significant leaders in our community. And although these happen to be evangelical pastors, I am intentionally trying to reach out to different segments of our community, including business leaders, civic leaders, and faith leaders to strengthen our partnership and engagement in pursuit of one of our big rocks, which is community engagement. I also had the opportunity to meet on the 6th of October with the Pike's Peak Area Superintendents Association. This is a recurring meeting. I've reported to you on some things coming out of that meeting before. And there were, there were several key themes that match up with themes that this board is thinking about and talking about in terms of CASB and CASB resolutions, ongoing frustrations with school funding formulas. Probably the biggest point of unity and concern is around the state's accountability system. So we will continue to stay as engaged as we can with a task force that is considering revisions to the state accountability system or adjustments to the priorities or the principles by which that state accountability system is run. That committee, that task force, excuse me, is being chaired by a local superintendent, Dr. Wendy Bernhansel from Harrison District 2, who is the current Superintendent of the Year in Colorado, is representing us and our region, but also representing the perspective of, of schools that are not well-served by the, or districts that are not well-served by the current accountability system. So those are a couple of initiatives I wanted the board to know about. We're very happy to be in the middle of our fall break. This is the time when a lot of other districts are jealous. They're not jealous in the first two weeks of August, but they are now when we're, we're giving our teachers and students a much-needed break, and most of us are on a little bit lighter workload and appreciating the great Colorado fall. So that is my report. I'm happy to answer questions that you may have. Questions? No questions? Aye, say again.
Just a question, when you were meeting with the different community groups, was that part of COS I Love You?
Indirectly, it's part of 'Cause I Love You. Since my wife is a pastor, we get double invited to things like the 'Cause I Love You leadership program or pastor and spouse retreat. And so in, in a couple of those settings, I interact with people that are pastoring at churches that operate in our facilities. And so that's where the relationship starts or the network starts. But this, this is an independent group. They, they began meeting together during COVID, actually, as they started working through the challenges of pastoring remotely. And they've just continued meeting monthly, invited me to come and just share what we are learning in the district and how we're wanting to partner with, with their churches and their congregations and serve the same students that come to our schools and the same families that are part of their community. Just to point out that the churches don't belong to our schools. They rent space at our schools, so they actually pay for their time in our schools. And I can introduce you to the Chamber of Commerce, Eastern Plains Chamber of Commerce, or the Colorado Springs Main One, and various veterans groups to include American Legion, the Marine Corps League, and I believe that VFW, Veterans for Foreign Wars, is trying to open up a chapter in the Falcon area. So love the outreach. We don't have any students today, if you've noticed, and that's because it's fall break. They were invited, but they had better things to do. Director DeVola, time for your update.
So I was able to attend the Special Education Resource Fair, which was very educational and a great place for parents to get resources and to have guidance on how to help their, their children. And there's good partnership going on even with the other districts as well, because it was multiple districts who were invited to have tables and booths there. And my daughter really enjoyed having her face painted, by the way. And we went to the CASB conference, and so Colorado Association of School Boards, being able to go up there for the delegate convention. I was very intrigued by how the process works. I learned a lot of how to collaborate with other board members from different districts in order to amend or change or go through the process of getting their resolutions approved and how they can help each other on the floor when it comes to having a second. So it was really good to see that process play out. Unfortunately, we're still in the minority for conservative voices in the CASB itself. So we need more and more smaller districts who are involved in, in that. And part of it was having that remote process that would have helped as well. So, but it was really good to be able to collaborate and to see how, how it runs. And we were able to win some good local control measures, which was encouraging. I wanted to leave you guys with a quotation from Ronald Reagan. He was our 40th President of the United States, and he actually spoke to a prayer breakfast, prayer breakfast in Dallas, Texas in August 1984. This goes along with the civics discussion we're about to have. "We establish no religion in this country, nor will we ever. We command no worship, we mandate no belief, but we poison our society when we remove its theological underpining, underpinnings. We court corruption when we leave it out, when we leave it bereft of belief. All are free to believe or not believe, all are free to practice of faith or not, but those who believe must be free to speak of and act on their own belief to apply moral teaching to public questions. I submit to you that the tolerant society is open to and encouraging of all religions, and this does not weaken us, it strengthens us. Without God, there is no virtue, because there's no prompting of the conscience. Without God, we're mired in the material, that flat world that tells us only what the senses perceive. Without God, there is no, there is a coarsening of the society, and without God, democracy will not and cannot long endure. If we ever forget that we're one nation under God, then we will be one nation gone under."
Thank you. And Lori, three minutes.
I have got to stop leaving the country during the time the Special Education Resource Fair is. This is the second year in a row that I have missed it and, but I wanted to share one quick story. I did send someone who's very close to me to the resource fair, and once again, she was able to make a couple of really good connections to help her adult autistic son. So one thing that's really important to know about our resource fair, in addition to the fact that it's a collaborative process with both School District 11 and School District 20, don't make the mistake that it's just for kids or current students. They have resources there to help special needs populations of all ages. So it's an incredible event, and I always enjoy hearing about what happens there. I also attended the SCAAC meeting, and they, they generated input from security staff, students, and, and it just really overwhelms me, just their complete commitment to keeping our students safe. And so I want to give kudos to our amazing security team and how they're always evaluating situations and looking for solutions, looking what has worked, what hasn't worked, and how open they are to whiteboarding with the community to find out what their thoughts are. The CASB meeting was really experience. It was a great experience. I have to commit, you know, when I first came on the board, I, I didn't have maybe the best outlook towards CASB because of some of what was happening with the National School Board Association. And I'm glad that I allowed myself to think again. The opening session was on the power of deeper learning for preparing future-ready graduates. And they showed a bunch of different innovative programs around the United States. And I have to say something. We do a lot of what they were showing in District 49. We already do that with so many innovative programs that we have here. The lunch meeting was a bylaw review, and one of the presenters was our own John Graham. So needless to say, it was long. But I also got to see how John has networked across the state to build alliances, to work with different people and get to know different people. So I actually got to see a different side of John and how much networking he has done on behalf of School District 49. So I want to give you kudos for that. Then I went to Legal Quick Hits about topics that can impact public education and proposed regulations coming up. Later on, I went to an onboarding session, which was incredibly informative, which was presented by two board members from School District 12. The next day, Jamie Lynn and I were in the resolution session, and it was very interesting to watch how people work together. Sometimes there were groans and moans and, and a lot of vigorous debate. And it was a really fascinating process. It was very long, but we got a couple of the resolutions sponsored by District 49 and neighboring districts went through, so it was very informative. Thank you.
Thank you. In my mind, we all got extra time now that there are two board members not here, so. No?
Well, now you tell us.
Well, keep going. No, I just thought of it. Ready to start the clock? John Graham, President of District 49. I've been to the CAC Resource Fair, which was outstanding. I enjoyed the snacks more than the face painting, though. And been to the SCAAC and the CLAC, recent CLAC. So I won't give you my opinion of that until we get that presentation. The various candidate forums, we've had some candidates, you know, come to different forums, but it really helps you better understand who the candidates are and what they stand for and what they say or don't say. And then there's CASB. So all of our resolutions went through. There were some resolutions that went through I would have preferred not to go through, and I did speak to them. And I believe I was the only candidate or only delegate that actually spoke about the Constitution and individual liberties and a proper role of government. And when it comes to taxes, we did receive a presentation on Proposition HH from Magellan Strategies, which showed that the more people understand Proposition HH, regardless of whether they're Democrat, Republican, or Independent, the less they support it. So this election season can be very important in the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, and HH will gut it. So I'm just, that's kind of what we were told and the research that I've conducted, research. And, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, everyone in this room typically is an informed voter. But we all know that there are people that are low-information voters because they're busy, they're raising kids, they're families, you know, they're working a job or two, single parents, whatever. And you really need to get educated on the issues and the candidates before you vote, because that will determine the further direction of District 49. Additionally, I like that Ronald Reagan quote, he's one of my political heroes. And so just wanted to give that out. I turn back the 46 seconds of my time. Now get another five minutes for the Board administrative updates. We are working on some policies that will become before this board here, before I am off the board, just so everyone's aware. I did receive a letter from eight out of nine of our charter schools that we are discussing as an administration, legal, myself, and going to ask the board for guidance on that right now. The letter addresses some concerns that they want me and the board to look into, and so we're going to do that. Okay? I asked the board, this is kind of, it's a weird situation because there's a, in contracts, in our contracts, there's a provision to address concerns with the board president. And the board president meets with them typically without board consensus or anything. But they said board president and Board of Education, and they wanted to keep it out of the contract grievance process. But sending the letter is the contract grievance process. So I wanted support from my two fellow board members here to look into this situation and meet and then basically report back to the board and just basically to take the lead on it like I'm supposed to when it comes to contracts. Do you guys agree with that? Or I don't know how long it will take. I just plan on getting meetings started right away. So I'm kind of looking for support so that we're at least unified.
So you're asking if we would support you to go find out more?
Yeah. I, I have been told legally and by administration that as part of the contract process, that is my authority and duty to do that. But I want your backup. Yes?
The only question I have is, is what if they desire to meet as a unified group instead of one-to-one?
I don't know. I haven't talked to them about any of it. So I didn't want to address the issue outside of legal, the administration, and the board without getting your blessing, so to speak. So, okay. Mr. Miller or Mr. Hiltz?
I would, I would add that one of the reasons we write contracts is to set expectations and clarify what to do when something comes up. When, and, and so I would ask that we not try to create an ad hoc process. We have a defined process. This letter does initiate that process. And I have offered to act on Mr. Graham's behalf and essentially on the board's behalf to, to do some fact-finding to look at some of the documents or some of the communications that may be referenced in this letter. I'm happy to do that on whatever schedule Mr. Graham would assign and then report back to him so that he can proceed with meetings. The idea of, of a single meeting with multiple board presidents is not, that's not a contractual system or concept, because what happened at School A may not have happened at School B. The interaction at School D might not be the same as what we experienced at School F. And so that's why these contracts are all independent and why the resolutions ultimately will have to be independent, school by school, as well. I know that the, the letter explicitly tries not to be part of that process, but then tries to create a process to which none of us have ever agreed. It's not in any of the contracts. So we really need to follow our contractual due process system, and that will give us the best opportunity to, to get to a resolution that both the school and the district can be happy with.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, so that gives me the, you know, a, the backing, you know, for the authority that I have. And then I, Mr. Hiltz, as you just mentioned, I'd like you to help me out with that.
Yes, sir.
Okay? And I, I would like you to do that and, you know, get it rolling as soon as possible. And I will respond to those people that, you know, we addressed the letter and that the board has given me the authority to look into this, that I've assigned you to get into the details, and then we'll set up meetings, say, next week. I'm going hunting at the end of the month. So I'm hoping that I can address all issues at least once. And I think communications is important and living by a cultural compass and approaching this from the value all people and the trust, et cetera, et cetera, will, will hopefully resolve any concerns.
Okay, I, I will begin to, I'll begin fact-finding immediately. I'll probably send that letter tomorrow. And then it depends really on the, on the response rate of the school leaders and their board presidents, how quickly we can synthesize and set you up for a meeting.
I'm just letting them know that I make myself available very quickly for situations like this. Okay, that was my full five minutes. I did want to address another issue, but I'll ask Lori to speak and will not address my other issue.
I don't know the structure of the contracts, obviously, every contract. But if Mr. Graham is off to go get Bambi, if there is a gap, I could also, I would be willing to step in as part of the listening portion, if you think that's appropriate.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, so we're going to move on now. Is there anything else administratively we need to cover? We talked about CASB, we talked about this issue. I know there was another issue in the back of my mind. If I think of it, I'll bring it up as other business, but I think we're moving forward. And now we're on to action items. Board policy updates. We have a motion for 7.1, please.
I move to approve the policy updates as recommended by the administration.
Second.
Any discussion on any of the policies? Jeremy, Director DeVola?
Yes, for policy DJE, I just wanted to know why the amount difference for bidding?
I'm going to invite Mr. Jim Rohr, who directs our procurement and purchasing process and really is the expert on, the subject matter expert on this, to explain the difference between how we manage those two processes.
Thank you, Jim Rohr, Purchasing Manager. And your question was, why is it, why is it, are we wanting to change it?
Right, you had mentioned at the last meeting that it was increasing, but I believe we didn't have the updated policy with the actual numbers in there. There was like, we were trying to fit, find it, and I was a little lost. So I just wanted to know if you could explain why there was the, an increase for bidding?
Yes, we're, we're recommending to increase not only when the public bids go out, but also the threshold where we get three quotes. So right now, it's, there's no competition up to $10,000. We're asking to change that to 20, just because of inflation. The, you know, the prices have gone up, you know, substantially since we've last updated these. Also to be more in line with, I did a lot of market research in all the other school districts in town and in Denver to try to move us to, you know, more in line with them to, you know, I guess it, it streamlines the process, but it's at the same time that, you know, I don't, I think the thresholds are reasonable enough to get the, the amount of competition that we need to make sure that we're getting the, the value that we need for the district. And so it's essentially increasing, increasing just because, you know, the inflation, the, the lead times are going up with, you know, you know, diesel's up, which makes everything go up. So we're just trying to be more in line with what everyone else is doing. And, and I'd be happy to show those numbers to you from the other school districts. I have a spreadsheet that I did, and I don't know if I included that in the request, but I think the CFO and I think Peter might have, might have seen that at one point. But I can definitely show that to you as well.
Let me ask Director DeVola, is that a document you wish to see?
Not, not for this vote, but if you could send that document, I would be really appreciative of it.
Absolutely.
Okay, Director Thompson?
Yeah, I would like to see the document, only because when you look at the no-bid items, it was, it looks like it doubled in amount, and the last revision was just two years ago. So I know that there has been inflation, but this looks like a 100% increase. So it would be very beneficial just to see what kind of costs we're talking about as far as the no-bid amounts. I like the fact that the higher amounts all require at least three bids and the bonds and some of the other verbiage I saw in here, but that exceeds. but that exceeds inflation. So I know that's a part of it because we've all experienced it in our lives. But I wouldn't mind seeing the chart that gives us the comparison for more clarity.
I guess I'll share with you right now, and just, I don't know if you have access, but you can look at it later or now, whatever you wanna, wanna do.
All right, and what happened two years ago that caused all this inflation? Hmm. All right, uh, my question is, uh, for the 100,000 and the 150,000, who's the approving authority for the amounts under those numbers?
So right now, um, I am signing, uh, things that are 15,000 and below and, um, everything between 15,000 up to 100,000 is being signed by Lou or David, and Peter's signing everything over that. And we are discussing, you know, changes to that as well, but that's...
Is that a different policy that says what those authorities are? Because that should be in policy.
There is a policy, but it doesn't, it doesn't explain the, the amounts. It just says it will be delegated by the superintendent.
Okay.
Um, so that's still a discussion item, you know, that we haven't really tackled yet.
Okay. I, I would suggest to the board that we should request an update to that policy that would include the authorities, something I've been working on for years, you know? This le- you know, the, the board approves this level, superintendent approves this level, chief operations or CFO approves this level, you approve that level, just so everyone knows what level of authority we, we, we delegate to these approvals. So what policy is that? Do we know a hand? If we don't know, board, do you, do I have consensus to?
I believe it's policy DJB, purchasing procedures, which is cross, cross-referenced below.
Okay. Board, do I have your consensus to ask the administration to update that policy with the appropriate mu- dollar amount authorities?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, great. Thank you. Okay, so is there any other questions about any other policies? Peter, I don't know how long that would take, so I'll, I'll wait for you to recommend. I don't think it would be that quick. It was explained very well.
No.
Um, okay, let's have a vote then.
DeVola?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
And the policy's passed. Thank you so much, Mr. Rohr.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven point two, may I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the district in unified improvement plans as recommended by the administration.
I have questions. Do either of you have questions? Second? I can go ahead? Great, thank you. Let me get to that agenda item. So as you may recall, last meeting, I was, I wanted to be shown how to read the reports because it was a different format. And Lisa Philo and her team spent two hours showing me how to read the formats and, uh, the, uh, district and school performance frameworks and, uh, you know, how to basically dig in to the layers more than what the state posts on their website. You know, the initial layer is the district ratings. But when you get into the district report, it, it, it tells you something different than what people at, other people on this board has said and what certain candidates are saying. When you dig into the schools, it shows even more information that basically shows that, you know, um, I'm gonna take one of our elementary schools. I'm gonna use this as an example. A year ago, that elementary school was priority improvement. That was its ranking. Priority improvement is next to the lowest. We don't have any schools as, uh, in the lowest, okay? And we've had years where we've only had two schools in improvement, and now we have five schools in improvement, none in priority improvement, I think. Uh, am I right on that?
None in priority, none in...
None in turnaround. So the two lowest we don't have. This elementary school basically got a really bad rating, and they looked into it, okay? And, and for the record, I'm not a true believer in these, uh, the way the state does these ratings. That's why we're looking into doing some, you know, trying to get some things passed that are different. But that priority improvement, one year later, is, you know, basically, uh, you know, online with everything else. They, they jumped two levels. They are in performance now. So what did they do? They basically said, oops, well, they used a different word than that, but trying to be polite. Uh, but they said, "We didn't do so good. Let's take a real good look at why that is." And they did look into it, and it turns out that they were not, uh, using the CK, CKLA curriculum, which is Core Knowledge Language Arts, uh, with fidelity, which means they weren't really, you know, they, they didn't train well enough on it and they, they weren't consistent on it. And they realized that was a best practice that other schools that were doing well were doing. So they, they put the nose to the grindstone in CKLA, in the math curriculum, and in culture, three areas they identified that they needed to improve on. And that team, which includes the teachers, the support staff, the leadership, headquarters, parents, they all came together, came up with a plan to improve the fidelity of the instruction, to train the teachers, do the professional development and everything. And in one year, they ju- they jumped two rankings. So there is a problem with the rankings, though, because performance is, like, if this is, if this is like the whole category of, of the four rankings, performance is like half of that. You could be at the top of the performance and you're still performing as someone who is, you know, 40% lower. So there's a movement statewide that myself and others are initiating, and I'll be off the board, so I'm gonna be hammering them guys, uh, to do a resolution for CASB to add another category to these ratings so that you could differentiate performance. And that gives people another shot, another goal to reach. Uh, but that was, that was one of our schools. That shows you that our educators, our professionals, our support staff take this stuff seriously, and they can achieve what they set their minds to. Now, I would ask if Communications can bring up the, uh, I wanted to see the Falcon High School School Performance Framework, which is off the CDE website. And, uh, I don't know if we can bring that up, so I'm gonna explain it so you see the difference. So when someone says we're failing, you know we're not. And they've been educated on this, and they still push this story that students are failing, and they're not. And, and if you can't bring it up, I, I, I can talk to it as well because I have it on my computer. Okay. The reason why I'm, I'm doing this is it's so important to bring up this and talk about the frameworks. And of course, it's on my other computer. But if you go to workforce readiness of that framework, Peter, okay, and you'll see on this framework, this is... Sorry. Unfortunately, I don't know how to turn off my phone, so it's giving me a, a medical alert. And, uh, it's because I ate sugar. And I don't know if it's, uh, I don't think I can, can you just put that in your office? Thanks. It's a new fangled phone, okay? It's like top of the line. I'm so, thank you, Lynette. But when you bring up the, uh, when you bring up the framework, it'll show you that our SATs are a little bit lower than the state average, both in language arts and math. And our students typically take the math that's on the SAT in eighth grade and ninth grade. So when they take the SAT in 11th grade, it's, they're like, eh, eh. Okay, so... Yeah. What I, what I would like to see, you know, is, uh, Falcon High School, and I'm not singling out Falcon, but I think this is a good news story. Just go all the way down to, uh, the third page, and it'll, it talks about the graduation rates and workforce readiness. Okay, so right there. So here you see SAT, we're a little bit, in some areas, we're a little bit below, okay? And, and you'll, you'll see that we're either approaching, they meet or exceeds, or certain categories of students do not meet. So that tells us to focus on those students and where to focus our instruction and professional development, stuff like that, to improve those different areas. But you also see graduation rate, all students. Now, when people tell, "We're, we're failing our students and they're not graduating", basically, in this, Colorado does seven years for graduation, okay? So, seven years, right? So most students graduate in four, but there are some students that need credit recovery or they withhold their high school diploma and they do college-level courses, and we call that 12 plus one. And the district and the state pay for those classes. A lot of those students get associate's degrees. They're not graduating in four years, so therefore, all students, our graduation rate is basically lower because if you have 60 students doing 12 plus one out of 600 graduates, that's 10% that don't get their diploma in four year, and we do have dropouts. And we do have people that need credit recovery. That's where the fifth year rate comes into. That's where the sixth year rate comes to, and that's where the seventh year rate comes to. You look at all those rates, that's pretty damn good. When you look at, uh, you know, matriculation rates, that's not as high, okay? For the military, because not everyone reports going into the military. But I'm gonna point out, uh, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Hiltz if he can answer this. It says dropout rate, all students. So they had 1,519 students at Falcon High School. They had a 0.9% dropout rate of all students. .3 in free and reduced lunch, 1.1 in minority students, and that led to a .9 dropout rate. I'm not sure how we're failing students with graduation rates like this and dropout rates like this. And does it have another one that talks about the workforce readiness?
Mr. Graham, this whole section?
This is the workforce readiness.
This fourth section is post-secondary workforce readiness?
Post-secondary workforce readiness. So Vista Ridge is like this. Sand Creek is like this. Our high schools, all of our high schools are like this with low dropout rates and graduation rates that are, eh, close to 90, if not better than 90, in the different years that those kids are graduating. Okay, so if you wanna be, if you wanna have integrity and you wanna talk about workforce readiness and stuff like that, go to the individual school and you will see that we're doing pretty darn good. So why does our overall grade suffer as a district? And there's only one major reason for that is we took on authorizing a alternative school that is statewide, meant to catch all of those education casualties throughout the state and to get them their diploma. And currently, that school has, I think, over 5,500. We'll find out in a...
62.
62. 6,200. When I wa- when I started on the board, there was only like 2,000, 2,500 kids in the whole school. They've increased 150%. Now, I'm not gonna do common core math here, but, you know, it's, it's roughly 150% or better. They graduated a little over 1,100 students last year of a graduate, of a s- four-year senior class of 2,339. And those students that did not graduate in their fourth year then move on to the fifth year or sixth year. So all these schools that had down, that don't have alternative facilities, alternative education facilities, they send them to GOAL Academy. And we make sure that they get in education, really, GOAL Academy makes sure. They work very hard and they drop incentives and everywhere else to get those kids in education. I have seen the first child in a family get a high school diploma, and the mother who did not have a high school diploma that pushed her to get that diploma got her GED through GOAL. And they, mom, grandma had a grandbaby in her arms, and mom had a baby in her arms. And that family now has a better chance of success in life than, and, you know, people without diplomas. So in our community, there are people that want to criticize the district, and they are justified in holding us accountable. But if you dig down one layer, this is one layer, you get to the truth. And then you understand why we may be 160 at 178 school districts, 140, whatever the number is, I don't even care. But in reality, we're doing things in this school district that no other district in the state of Colorado is doing for every student. So if you got anybody that, we know there are people out there that cannot tell the truth. They don't want to. They don't wanna know the truth, and they can't recognize the truth. And they believe what is not true. But we, who pay attention to these meetings, we know. And our parents, more specifically, our parents that attend our district-operated schools and our charter schools know the truth because they're happy with the schools that they're in. And we provide, it's gonna be over 54%. Last year, 54% of our enrolled students attended charter schools and homeschool enrichment programs. That is more choice enrollment than any other district in the state of Colorado. Only 46% last year attended district oper- our 1921 district-operated schools. And what does that tell you? That tells you that people are where they wanna be. And it also tells you that we are leading the way in the state of Colorado. And, and that, you can ask these two. That come across in CASB too, where unfortunately, I had to spring up a lot of times to the microphone to take positions that favored, uh, responsible spending at the state level and, and DC and local control. Anyway, if you guys have nothing else, I, I thought those were some very important points because I've been hearing in some of the candid, uh, candid forums, things that are not true and probably are just confused. Director DeVola?
Yeah, I was able to sit down with, uh, Mr. Hiltz and, uh, go through a couple of these UPIs and how, or UIPs, I'm sorry, on how, um, um, he's talked with each principal and on how they can move their level. Um, and, and going from a daunting task, something that seemed impossible, and showing them that actually you only need to move one or two numbers, um, in order to do that. What areas are you gonna focus on? What is that going to look like? And it actually gave the principals some, something to work with instead of thinking that it wasn't a possibility to move into different points. To your point, John, um, there, the, the way that they weight things on those, on the, um, performance frameworks, um, it's kind of confusing. Um, and there's, there's some definite confusion if you have a, uh, a school that is higher performing and they score lower than a school who is low performing. Um, and a lot of that has to do with weighting, um, especially, like, the goal is performance and it, this goal is achievement. In order to get there, yes, you're gonna have to have growth, but the more that you get higher, the harder it is to have growth. And so there's always this balance of which is more important, achievement or growth. Well, the ultimate goal is high achievement. However, they weight growth as 60% versus, um, having it 50/50. And so your higher achieving schools, eh, they might be approaching in growth, but they way outperformed all the surrounding schools. And that I foresee as a huge problem when their rating starts to drop. Um, of course, you still want growth, no matter where you're at. Um, so just knowing that it's not a cut and dry... Um, so, just knowing that it's not a cut and dry, like, this school is so much better cuz they had a better score. No, you have, you actually have to look at every single piece of data in order to understand it. Which, um, didn't come until I was able to sit down with Peter and kinda go through that, so.
So we should add that to the training of new board members, right?
We need a good training of new board members.
I'm just gonna comment on J.B. Lynn's part before I call on you, Lori. I hope that is understood because the higher performing students have lesser growth. And District Forty-nine, as Peter had mentioned, for years now, this is going on years, has been working with regional superintendents and other boards. And CDE on local accountability measures, which would be on our dashboard eventually. The state doesn't allow that right now, but when they do. Cuz it's a growing movement to say, my, my school, my kids don't go to college in this school, in rural areas. They go work on farms and in industry and what create businesses. We're not taking the SAT. We're not doing A, B, and C, we're doing C, D, and E. So that's what we should be graded on, because that's what our students consider and parents consider success. And that's one reason why we, uh, you know, we build foundations and want students to success. Not necessarily based on a standardized test. It's based on what that parent and student combination. Believe their student's success looks like. That's why we have all these individual choice programs for students, by the way, and school choice. So anyway, I absolutely agree with you, it, it gets confusing and that's, you can't just take one number. And you, and, and again, District Forty-nine is different from every other district. Because we have more choice than any other district. We actually have more enrolled students in choice than probably all the local ones combined. Lori?
I'm really glad you brought that up because some people like to kind of cherry pick data that might. Prove their point one way or another. And it can be very misleading, I remember when we were, when I was first running for the board, I was given a lot of different information and I was looking at the CMAS chart. And I was looking at the scores and you could see the area for improvement. And this is just the Colorado State Assessment. But I asked a question to someone who I think was behind putting those together. And I said, okay, your ranking is one fifty-fifth, but I'm looking at this district, which is a different district, not too far from here. And all of their scores are lower than ours and they're ranked at a hundred. And at that time, he says, well, I don't know what the difference is. And it does have to do with a combination of factors, like, for instance, if you have a student, let's say they show, um. Twenty-eight percent of their students are proficient at ELA. And they have a five percent growth. And then you go to another district and let's say they have sixty percent proficient at ELA. And they have a one percent growth. They will score lower because they didn't register as much growth. And so recently, I was looking at a combination of six years where the growth, and there's one thing that, that was an incredible story that needs to be told here. And that's when you look at minority test scores, cuz they break those out. And so, in twenty-twenty-two, it showed English Language Arts Black, they had thirty and fourteen, thirty was ELA, fourteen was math. Hispanic was forty-one and twenty-three. Then you jump forward to twenty-twenty-three. And English Language Arts for Blacks was forty and the math was twenty-three, Hispanics was forty-eight and twenty-two. If you look at this, you're showing ten, nine percentage points of growth. And just so you know, in those areas, we outperformed our two most competitive districts that are closest to us. When it comes to growth with both Black and Hispanic for English Language Arts, I think there was a one percent drop in one of those measures for math. But it was just phenomenal, and when you look at some of our neighboring students, they either stayed the same, they had one percent drop or growth. So when it comes to that one area, District Forty-nine outperformed our two closest, I hate to call them competitors. Another thing that people should be aware of is that I have been interacting more with different board members from. School District Eleven, School District Twenty, and School District Thirty-eight. And you would not believe how often they wanna hear about our policies. They wanna hear about our charter schools. And it's been very informative, I have to set up another one, um, just because it was so informative to hear these discussions on policies and on charter schools. And how much they want to learn from District Forty-nine. So, I think we just need to, to get the word out there and to really dig deep into the data. And just because we've had these gains, they're not enough, we want more. That was the primary goal of this board, was academic growth and improvement. And I do also have to give kudos because I sat down with Mr. Hiltz and he was showing us how on that school performance. Framework, how we're just off by one or two points and how we cannot leave those lying on the table. But when you get into the data, it's very good to ask questions, ask serious questions and learn, unless you just wanna bludgeon someone. Um, Rick has a saying, he always says, the beatings will continue until the morale improves. I don't think that's the best way forward, the best way forward is to find solutions. And I like the direction we're going as a board and as a district to try to find those solutions.
Yeah, the Marines, we used to call that false motivation, so even if you were. Be, beat up and, yeah. Anyway, uh, Lori was talking about our district scores. And, you know, that's compared, as she said, to our neighbors. And we as a district and they as districts, our administrations work together, try to learn, you know, how to improve. You know, when we had a, uh. A death in transportation, one that impacted us severely. Their bus drivers came over. So that our bus drivers could go to the funeral. From, from several other neighboring districts. Education is, is, is not this conglomerate. You know, corporation, it's local. Our neighborhood schools are just that, neighborhood schools, they're not government schools or indoctrination centers, they're. Neighborhood schools. And the decentralization that District Forty-nine by purpose, on purpose. Allows the communities to better inform those schools what their values are. So. Uh, and, and what Lori was talking about, I actually, you know, am connecting with board presidents and board. Directors across the state. And, and a lot of these matters. So, local accountability measures, Peter, keep hitting them. And, uh, if you read in detail these things, these UIPs, you will see that these schools have really good plans. Even the ones that are performance, have really good plans to improve. And it is all data-driven, so I wanna thank Lisa Philo and her team, not only for briefing me, but for, you know, the data and the analysis that they do. And then they go out to the schools and help them understand what is happening in their particular schools, let's have a vote.
Duvall?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, we're on to information items, which are typically just for, mostly for the board, and some of it is restricted. Cuz it does identify where students are going or whatnot, things like that. We're on to nine point two. Discussion item? August year-to-date financial update, Mr. Sprens, welcome.
Good evening, Board. Ron Sprens, Director of Finance. With an August update, this is a little weird. Um, as I mentioned in my last update, one of our, uh, one of the things that we're committing to last year. From the, the work that we did trying to, uh, with, with the, the three key, um, KPIs. Was to get better in our reporting. And get it out in a more timely manner. I think, I think getting these to you isn't very important, but I think more, uh, for me to update you, I think it's gonna be a little better if that's on a quarterly basis. You would think October means September's done, but by the time I had to get this information and we weren't closed with September yet. And so I had to use August data, so really, we're only looking at two months of data. Uh, not a lot going on in the first two months, it's, uh, uh, one month of summer and the one month we're just getting moving, so. Uh, I can show you what I have, it's, it's similar to the one I, I presented on last time. I had to cut it back a little bit, uh, because we've got some, um, we've got a couple of new zone leaders and I wanna give them an opportunity to write up. Uh, how their zone, uh, whatever they wanna write up about their zone, give them an opportunity to, to do that. So, again, this is a very abridged version of what we got. The other thing I don't have in here, which, which I, I really like, are the, the spend maps that I put at the, at the bottom. On the appendix that show how the spending is going across the district and at each school. I have those and they're updated, but they were updated for September and I, I just didn't have time to go and, and move everything back to, uh, August, so. Once I get this to you, um, we'll be on a better, uh, rotation of, of how the, um, how this report is updated. So, again, very similar, uh, about District Forty-nine is all the same. Executive summary, some changes here, this is interesting, if you wanna see what our, our current PPR is, this is budgeted numbers. Uh, you can see how the negative factor is affecting us this year, the negative factor is down to four point six million. Affecting our, our district, that's, I wanna say it was, um, it was over ten last year. So the, this was a, a nice bonus for, um, uh, our district, and all the districts in the, in the state of Colorado, really. Going down, you can see this is how we've spent our money, um, through August. This is pretty much how we budgeted, eighty-three percent going to personnel expenses and seventeen percent going to implementation or non-personnel, uh, expenses. Uh, and then we've got, uh, some of the detail here, uh, and I'll show you, I wanna, I wanna show you one particular thing. Here, and it's not, it's not really, it's not a, a big deal the first two, two months of the year, but as we head into, get deeper into, uh, the year. Getting into January of, of next year, typically, our expenses. Will outpace our revenue, and you can see we've already started, so, um, right now, um, and it's only sixty thousand dollars, but, um. We've got revenue coming in, but our expenses are higher than that. And the, the reason that is, is how the, the state funds us. They fund us. Pretty much one-twelfth of the state-funded piece. Every year, but that state-funded piece has the, our local taxes in it. We don't get our local taxes until February. That's when they start, or I'm sorry, March is when they start rolling in. And so that is when our revenue will start outpacing our expenses. That's one of the reasons we hold, uh, the fund balance, uh, we try to hold that at around ten, eleven, twelve percent of our revenue. Just to make sure we have enough cash in the bank to make it through February. Uh, and typically, February is, is that timeframe where we're, we're really looking at the, the bills that we have to pay to make sure that we have cash in the bank to get those paid. Really, uh, again, this is only two months of data, I don't really have a lot here, so I'm gonna probably give you back some time, uh, unless we got questions.
Director Duvall, anything?
It's, it's a comment, not a question, but, um. I am so glad that you were wired to work with numbers and money, because that is not my expertise. And, um, and you did a nice job of putting it. In a way that someone who is not wired for numbers can understand it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Took him almost eight years to do that, but he has perfected it, in my opinion. Lori, anything?
Yeah, what she said.
I actually have one or two things.
Yes.
So. The first thing is to our stakeholders, community and candidates. This report here, you know, if you look at those first nine, fifteen pages, it explains all you need to know about the school district. In, in a written summary. That's number one. Number two is, when you go to the pie chart, eighty-three to seventeen. Almost every other school district is around eighty, twenty. We've stretched our ability to put more, and every three, every percent is, is around twelve to fourteen million dollars this year. We're do, we're paying as much as we can out of this budget. And that's why they've, we've come back to say, if we are going to retain. Highly effective experienced teachers and hire new teachers that can be taught how to be highly effective, we need to be able to pay them more. And some people don't understand this. I've had one gentleman reach out and say, well, we did a bond in nineteen ninety-nine, why can't we use that money? Okay, it's, they don't know, and we have to do a better job as a district educating them. And so I'm gonna, I don't know if this is a question or a comment, but what I've noticed is, and I've noticed this for a couple of years, is. As, there's, there's a cycle to the budget. And Ron is in the. Teaching phase of the budget to the board and to our stakeholders. When he talks about, you know, this is where this is, this is where that is, this is, this is why our revenue is less than our expenses. That's an important thing for this board to know. So what I would like to see, and I don't know how the other board members feel, so I'm not tasking, I'm asking for consensus. Perhaps, uh, I don't know that your lessons are codified, you know, in the month of October, I'm gonna talk about A, B, and C. So, so maybe we just kinda codify the lessons. You know, in this month, you're gonna teach this, in this month, you're gonna teach that, and, and they show up on the cover sheet as, uh, of, uh, you know, lesson objectives. So that we know exactly what you're gonna, you know, try to teach us that day.
I think that's a great idea, actually.
Okay.
Yes.
I didn't get any of this when I got on the board and, and I, you know, Ron sat with me as, as he sits with these ladies and Peter sits with them. And they start educating and educating, it's a fire hose. And the way Ron has done it for years is a little bit each month, a little bit each month, and if I can remember month to month, that would be great. You know, but, uh, if you can, I guess we have consensus to direct Mr. Hiltz to.
Uh, I think it's a great idea.
Get that going. You know, any, anything that's like, like this.
Every year, same thing, I agree.
Same things every year.
I agree.
You know, cuz it's, it's part of learning the budget cycle, it took me three years, four years to learn that budget cycle. I didn't even realize it was a budget cycle till after the second year. So, yeah, and I was like, didn't any teacher tell us that last year? And it's like, oh, there's a reason for that. And sometimes, when you're only doing two meetings a month, you don't connect the dots as a new board member. Okay, thank you, Ron, I appreciate you turning back fifty-three seconds and giving me a minute or two to bloviate. Now, we're on to, uh, nine point three. Nine point two.
So, this, uh, this item is relatively self-explanatory, um, and I appreciate that we had some comments tonight in public comment about the value of the CLAC. Really, the, the bottom line is that, uh, the CLAC emerged in a time of significant controversy. It has always operated under different forms of, of that same controversy. Um, it remains something of a, um, forum for contention. And it simply has not had the opportunity, or it has not had the, uh, the unity necessary for, to fulfill its purpose. We have other advisory committees in the district, and it may be that when we get to the end of the discussion items, we will revisit this. I, I don't know exactly why Ms. Duvall wanted to move the subcommittee topic, but it's actually a bit of a misnomer. Those committees that are listed under the subcommittee. Agenda item are not really subcommittees, they're advisory committees to the board, they're not subcommittees of the board. If they were subcommittees of the board, only board members would be members of them. And that logic applies to the DAC-CLAC relationship as well. So, to be very open and very transparent. Re-chartering the CLAC as a subcommittee of the DAC would reduce its membership. That is, that is intentional. Part of the problem with the current CLAC configuration is it's sort of an all-comers. Self-perpetuating, self-fulfilling sort of town hall debate society. And, and there has been really productive, good debate in that context, but there's also been a lot of agitation. And it hasn't been a, a single individual, but it has been a single perspective. And so I'm, I'm really looking to bring the CLAC back into a place of stability. Because the DAC has been stable, I was a foster parent, sometimes bringing a child into a stable home situation helps them find their stability. The CLAC is a little bit of a, of foster child of our advisory committees, and so I'm asking that the board re-charter the CLAC. Uh, I would be open to putting this on an agenda for March or, or April and coming back with a newly constituted board. Revisiting whether the CLAC could or should exist as a standalone. Meanwhile, between now and then. I've already asked the board if. I've already asked the board if Lynette and I could collaborate on a project to align all of our advisory committees. We have a bunch of acts. We have our ESCAC, we have our CAC, DAC. We also have the COGS, Champions of Gifted Students. Which is an ag, act, it's just a cog sack. Uh, we have our, our. All of these committees, this is a strength of the district. This advisory committee constellation. By state statute, the DAC only has to have seven people. But our practice is that we have representatives from every school, and that's been a huge strength for District forty-nine. I don't think you could say that the CLAC has been a strength for District forty-nine. I think you could say it's been a distraction, and it's met, it's had unfulfilled potential. So, I'm asking for two things. One is obviously to recharter the CLAC as a subcommittee of the DAC. And then two is for the board to continue to pay attention as we bring all of our acts. Our ACs, advisory councils, or advisory committees into alignment with each other. As as a quick example, the COGS, Champions of Gifted Students, doesn't have a charter from the board. It doesn't have a liaison from the board. Neither does the uh, PIECE, which is our committee for parents and families. And students who are multilingual learners. And so we just have some inconsistencies, and this is a strength that could be stronger. If we applied some consistency and alignment, and part of what I'm asking for in the case of the CLAC. Is to place it within a a high-functioning AC rather than leaving it out kind of on its own. I I I welcome board questions, comments, insights. Delays, if you think that that's necessary or appropriate, and uh, we'll, we'll take your direction and salute smartly and move forward.
Comments from the board? Discussion? Say again? Oh, I'm sorry, uh, it's kind of a different board now, so it just feels unnecessary, Director Duvall.
Okay, um, well, I, I'm sure there, that a lot of people know where I stood on the CLAC since its inception. Um, I have been against having the CLAC since it's uh, since it was discussed before I was even on the board. Um, it has been very dysfunctional, um, and has not, um, has not followed or. Just like Peter said, not been able to fulfill the duties that were uh, set for it. Um, I also wanted to speak to it as a, as a subcommittee of the DAC. So as being the, the liaison to the DAC, um, I can tell you that. The DAC itself is, is even struggling to fulfill its requirements as it is. Um, for example, our budget subcommittee reviewing the budget each year and making recommendations to the board. Actually hasn't happened for the last two years, and that is something that the DAC has been focusing on for this year. In order to get that subcommittee up and running to um, really be able to make those recommendations to the board. So I don't feel like it would be a good um, being put in as a subcommittee. Uh, I don't think that would help us to really focus on what the DAC is actually there for. Um, and so I would be um, all for dissolving the CLAC entirely and not having it as a subcommittee at all. Thank you.
Laurie?
You know, it's uh, interesting because I was at the meeting when they changed it over to CLAC and. When Mr. Van Weeran um, cast a vote for that, he gave a specific director that it would. Focus on the culture of how special education students are treated. And at the time, there was a former board member, now a former board member who said, oh, we have CAC. Well, that really isn't the purpose of CAC. CAC is, is aligned to try to find, fund and uh, and address IEPs in five oh four. And to provide the right resources for special education. And so a lot of people like to reference our cultural compass. And when you look at that cultural compass, value all people, sustain enduring trust, engage our community, offer exceptional choices. Build firm foundations, launch successful students. And then when you look at our phenomenal growth. Um, especially among minority youth right now in District forty-nine, I'm very proud of that. And I'm, I wonder if uh, CLAC is a solution in search of a problem. I have had, uh, I talked to one woman who volunteered for this committee and ended up in one of the subcommittees. And was very excited about launching things together, and they were trying to do bylaws and. There has been, uh, notes weren't taken, agendas weren't fulfilled. It has been very divisive. And I don't see that it has brought a lot to our community, and. I am not in favor of continuing with CLAC because um, I have not seen in the two years that I've been on the board. One successful item brought forward for, for anyone's consideration, be it DAC, but be it the board. All I've seen is a lot of infighting of people. With a bunch of very strong opinions, and so I don't see it as a benefit to our district at this time.
For me, I didn't vote for the CLAC, and I am a liaison to the CLAC. And I think that uh, it has potential. There are people that. Have issues with it cuz it was called an Equity Leadership Advisory Council, and quite frankly, Ivy Lou recommended that we focus on culture. And so we changed the name to Cultural Leadership Advisory Council. And if, as one of our public forum commentators said. We're on the right track, and I'm there at the meetings. And uh, I s- I see that it's, it's, it's something that this board has experienced. With, you know, decorum and parliamentary rules. And I think that they have a vote coming up to our, to, I think, I think it's a unopposed vote now. Uh, Jamie Bell is a senior at, I believe Falcon High School, and she's running to be co-chair. And I think if we have the right, uh, not saying we didn't have the right co-chairs, but if we have trained the co-chairs. On proper parliamentary procedures, number one, I don't have to speak at these things anymore. And number two, I think the meetings will be run more smoothly. I think that a lot of the contention between last year and this year was decorum and bylaws, which they just passed. And the bylaws do have some uh, decorum measures, uh, actually probably better than our measures. So uh, you know, I, I talked to Mr. Hiltz and Rick talked to Mr. Hiltz about. A policy on committee. Conduct and expectations. What, what do we expect of committee members decorum-wise, behavior-wise, participation-wise? Do, do they say the Pledge of Allegiance before every official meeting? Or do they do something different? Do they, you know, but that's a policy Mr. Hiltz has agreed with Rick to, to develop, and it's early. It's the discussion phase. Okay, what's gonna, what do we expect of our committees? And I think that the recently passed bylaws of the CLAC. Are an example for other committees as well, to be honest with you, but it, it will also help inform Mr. Hiltz's. Uh, development of a conduct and expectation policies, not just of people, but of the organization itself. And uh, I'm looking forward to seeing that. I, I, I think you said you would have it. Will you have a draft policy at the end of October, or are we further discussing it? As I know, we're busy with other things, so.
I'd have to review my notes. I, I, I know that this, this really is a nexus of board and administrative leadership. And so it made sense that um, because we track a lot of information and we try to run our ACs through board docs. Made sense to me that I would collaborate with Lynette, and we would, we would work on some consistent measures or principles, some of the. Some of the things that you just said, but also, does every act have a bylaw document? Does every act have a term of membership?
Do they even require?
Yeah, and that's.
Do they have a charter?
Yeah, and not all of them have those.
Yeah, and that's something I think that you just mentioned uh, earlier that you were working towards, is making it consistent. I do, I do believe that. When it comes to the types of committees that we form. We, we have some very robust school advisory, advisory committees, the DAC, others. That what it does is, whether it has a solution. Basis to it or not, what it does is it allows people to be heard in a different venue. I, I don't know if the recommendation movement, CLAC under the DAC is, you know. I could kind of like the proposal I heard out there, but I don't think right now we have. Uh, the will for the board to move your proposal forward, but we do have you working on those conduct expectations. Bylaws, formulas, you know, how we're gonna run these meetings. Uh, he, Mr. Hiltz is working on that, so we'll hear more of that, and uh, this item, I take it. The item is whether to move this proposal forward or not, and what I'm hearing from both of you is no.
I would like to move this forward. Here, this is my, my, my proposal, so I would like to move this forward. So that we can actually have a vote on it, um, so that we can, we can move on.
Okay, Laurie? Laurie, do you want to be the naysayer? Cuz I could say move it forward, and that's two, it could be two to one, and then we can have dissension in the ranks and still get along. It's up to you.
If we don't move it forward, then it's not gonna be voted on, and then we're gonna end up with it still being a thorn in our side for the indefinite future.
In your sight, I actually intended to apply for the CLAC, take control of it and actually make. Impose my will on it, like a good little fascist. Anyway, uh, Laurie, what would you like to do?
I think we could move it forward as a dis- as a discussion and a determination at a later date. I hope what I have seen come out of CLAC. I, I don't believe it's upholding the cultural compass and has been the best representation to our kids, but I think it should be put to a vote.
Yet, the students that are members of the CLAC do strongly believe in it. And when no one shows up, that's when you know it's no longer has a value to the community. But anyway, okay.
I would highly, I'd highly recommend that um, the people who are on the CLAC apply to be just on the DAC in general. And then we could actually have some good subcommittees like the MLO, or the MLO and the uh, Budget Committee. With more people who are able to work things out.
Looks like I might have a role after the board. All right, Mr. Hiltz, we're gonna move it forward. Do you want it on the next regular meeting? Which will be November, right around the election, or do you want to wait till after the election and put it on the December meeting?
Don't give him that choice.
It makes no sense to do something that another board might undo. So this might be one where you do actually appropriately want to kick the can down the road to the next composed board.
I object to that.
Laurie?
What she said.
Okay, we'll move it to the regular meeting in November and uh. Okay, Policy IKF Civics and Education, one of my pet projects.
So I'll, I'll just remain here uh, at, at the desk rather than stepping to the podium. As you note, um, I, I am submitting here a minor revision. Uh, I provided the red line that you so prefer, so that you can see there's not really much changing here. Our old language of CEO and zone leaders is now superintendent, zone superintendents. We do have in existing practice as well as course descriptions and approval. You heard this from the students, Mr. Graham. You heard this more extensively at the Student Board of Representatives meeting. Our students do complete either coursework on or in, on occasion. Embedded learning in an AP government class or or maybe a college government class. They already complete um. Learning about civics. Had we had students here, I will go ahead and speak for them, and Mr. Graham, you can correct my uh, recollection if you need to do so. You won't. Um, that, you heard from the students that while they find the civics education valuable. They find it less valuable when they have to take it in ninth grade, because some of the application doesn't happen until they're older. So that was one point, is that perhaps it's out of sequence in the high school experience. But the other thing that we both heard is that um, given the intent that civics education has some practical application. The students talked about a lot of other things that they find have practical application, but aren't necessarily about civics, but they're about adulting. And so, learning how to do personal financial management, learning how to own, own a vehicle and and take care of it well. How to make purchasing decisions, how to make financial decisions, how to own a home, uh, or or rent a home and and do some maintenance. There were a series of things that our students identified at the student board meeting that they thought were at least equally as important as civics.
They called them life skills, and it's a proposal Mr. Hiltz has, has presented to the board uh, before. Uh, we've started the discussion, what, two, three years, before COVID, and then we got.
Yeah, I, I talked about the concept of, that we would grant students a life-ready certification. And that we do, we would do that based on their completion and mastery of a bunch of simple tasks, and and not to be facetious, but. Um, being able to fill out a job application, submit a resume, change a tire in the rain. Uh, these are, these are life-ready skills, and students who can do many of those life-ready skills are more likely to be able to operate independently. Than students who cannot. Uh, there's a, there's a funny cartoon out there, um, it's the new version of TurboTax, and it just has one screen, call your dad. And that's not who we want to send out in the world. Um, we want to send out students who can. Yeah, we want to send out students who can, who can act independently, and so even though that's not completely germane to the topic of civics. I think, I thought it was worth a little public discussion that that's where our students, most of the students on the SBR are juniors and seniors. Uh, many of them have, have leadership roles already, and certainly they have leadership potential. So these, these folks are really thinking about the next phase of life. These, these student folks are thinking about the next phase of life. And I just think it's interesting that while they value civics, they really also value practical preparation. For the adult life that they're about to start. Um, so, I offer that for the board's consideration. I would, I would ask that because these are minor revisions to the policy, that you go ahead and move it forward. But this also gives you an opportunity to think and and think together about whether or not you might want civics to be distributed differently. Sequenced differently, um, marked differently for our graduates as a form of mastery. Uh, when I was a student teacher, so we went way back into the early, um, early nineties, I taught a course in Minnesota, yeah. Um, I taught a course called Majority at eighteen, and the whole point of that course was, once you turn eighteen, all kinds of things change for you. In your relationship to civil society. Are you ready for that? What do you do about that? How do you deal with criminal liability, financial liability? Employment opportunity, all of those things happen differently once you turn eighteen. And so I thought our, our students were insightful, and I wanted to report to you all uh, as a board in this setting. That they support civics education and they desire something more.
And uh, you know, Falcon High School, Falcon High School representatives basically said they do take as a requirement for graduation a semester of civics. They weren't sure if all the other high schools did that, but what we do is uh, we're required. The history of it is Colorado required a semester of civics for graduation. I don't know, before twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, they changed that to, you have to incorporate the standards into various different classes. And they have to hit all those standards in order to graduate, instead of having a class that encompasses all the standards. My idea was to propose a semester of civics, and some of the schools are already doing that. We can deviate from the state standards as long as we meet or exceed the standards, or we can teach them as far as local curriculum. Local classes, the way we decide. So those are just some of the options out there, but uh, I actually wrote down some of the life skills and. But they're just like personal finance, home economics, and one girl meant, you know, one kid mentioned sewing. You know, who knows how to sew a button? I do. I got taught in the Marine Corps how to tie a tie and sew a button, but not everyone gets that. They said that would be important. How do I tie a tie? You know, if I go to a job and if you're for the guys. Anyway, Jamie Lynn, go ahead.
Yes, um, thank you for Pete, uh, thank you, Peter, for uh, um, taking everything I was going to say.
For um I that's why I pulled eight point four, actually. I pulled it to specifically talk about the Student Board of Representatives and what they had brought up. So thank you for um preluding uh what I was going to say, which is awesome. Um so I would um in the future or uh having an addition to this policy uh that life skills and personal finance, uh also having uh not just civics. Civics is is kind of a broader term. Um and I know that there's a couple of courses, at least that's my understanding, uh you can correct me if I'm wrong, of my understanding of the civics recommend or requirement is that they can actually choose a couple of different classes that fall under the umbrella of civics. Is that correct in my interpretation?
Certainly under the mastery graduation standards, yes, they can demonstrate mastery in a couple of different ways. It could be multiple courses, it could be college, A P, advanced uh government courses, or they can take the the kind of the basic entry level civics course that most of them take as freshmen.
Okay, that's that was my understanding, thank you. And then um I would like to also propose that we have a class in free market enterprise, uh free market capitalism and entrepreneurship. Um that is very important. And then also a semester of the U S Constitution, um specific to the U S Constitution that used to be um required in certain certain um city or uh states in here in the United States that to graduate, you had to have free market enterprise and a semester of U S Constitution in order to graduate. And I do not believe that our seniors are required to have that.
Are there standards that they are required to meet for that?
There are, and standards are embedded in courses. And so if you look at the graduation requirements policy, which has has a menu of opportunities to demonstrate mastery, you'll see that we do embed this this general class of uh standards across a variety of courses. So we don't have a course in free market enterprise, but we have courses that include uh up to A P economics or college level economics. So that is an option. This board historically, and I and I'm talking about twenty years of District Forty Nine boards, this board has been very restrained about adding very discreet kinds of courses as graduation requirements. A menu of options, so for example, there are models that say a student should not graduate from high school unless they've taken.
Discreet or specific? Not sure what you mean by discreet.
Okay, I'll I'll explain what I mean by by discreet. There are places that say you have to take biology, chemistry and physics, or you don't graduate from high school. There are other places that say you have to take at least an earth science and a life science and at least one other science that all have to be lab sciences to graduate from high school. Then there are others that say you just have to take three science classes, right? So the three science classes is the most general. The biology, chemistry, physics sequence is the most discreet because because biology is distinct and discreet from chemistry, from from physics. This board has generally been moderated and said, let students have choice of a portfolio of class of a menu of classes from the catalog within the social studies area or within the social studies uh department. So for example, Mr. Vola, the classes that you are proposing, which I've entered into a document and made a note of, that would be a shift from the board being more open and moderated to being more directive and specific.
And we can wait till we have students back to ask more specific questions. I I do know my my son took uh business and finance classes. And there's an I know, what what is it called, the the entrepreneurial program that we do at different schools?
Uh some of our schools have partnered with Junior Achievement, that's probably the one that you're thinking of. Um but there are other um there are other opportunities for students to participate. We also have Distributed Education Clubs of America, which we all kind of know as D E C A, which is an opportunity for students to learn about the world of business and and business ownership and business participation. So there are there are options, um but they're not required options on that specific topic.
Director Thompson?
That's the first time I've ever heard the the word board and restrained in this district for a while. It's just not an adjective that I would have applied to my time on the board. When you look at Article Nine, Section Fifteen of the State Constitution, which is local control and curriculum, I think it's a very important principle and it was one that was brought up a lot at the Casby Conference. And and it actually those those resolutions did pass well. And so we're unique in District Forty Nine in that we're decentralized. I remember when my daughter started at Rampart High School and she had a teacher. We were going around to each teacher and there was a ninth grade teacher and he taught uh he taught government and civics. He was so engaging, I wanted to take his class and I have never wanted to return to high school. But he even said back then that it's the wrong year. So I like what you said about sequencing because he says I'm teaching these courses when they're freshmen and this really should be something taught juniors and seniors. So I like the idea of adding more, like we can meet or exceed state standards. Um we also have had, and thank goodness our communications teams bring this this out, special education students who ran a coffee cart, they ran a business and they were highlighted by our wonderful communications team. And that was teaching them about running a business, about handling finance. These are important life skills. Now I will give a full confession, and this was back at Irving Junior High, took a sewing course. She gave me a C for my T shirt because she felt I really tried. And I moved over to metal shop and I got an A. You just give me something to pound and I am good. And so but when it comes to life skills, I like changing a tire in the rain, I was saying, I'll hold the hose, that would be fun. Um but uh you know, I like the idea of incorporating life skills. But I also like teaching them about free enterprise principles because uh to me that is a life skill. I'm self-employed and I think that that is very beneficial. I have worked at a variety of jobs since I was fourteen years old. And I think life skills are very important, understanding free enterprise is very important. And it's the fabric of who we are as a country. So even though the boards have been restrained, even though we're decentralized, I think it's a worthy discussion to see what we can add as far as course requirements under Article Nine, Section Fifteen and still work with our zone leaders on the decentralized model and get their input and student input.
Right.
I second that.
I like that, the life skills.
Yes.
And and the things we're talking about and, you know, maybe we're not at the point to say they have to be a graduation requirement. Maybe they're an offering and see how much how much they're accepted, but that'll be for you guys to decide at a later time.
That would be a very good discussion now to have. Um and then something that's extremely important is every citizen of the United States needs to know the U S Constitution frontwards and backwards and every aspect of it, which is why I think it should be a requirement for a semester of a class on the U S Constitution. Because just breezing through it or a a overarching like this is what it looks like does not give them the foundation of where our uh government came from.
Just to add one more thought to that.
Yes, please.
Um not all of our students are citizens, but if they live in this country, it's a really good idea for them to understand the framework of this country. Some of the people that I have found who have the most uh admiration for the Constitution are some of my immigrant clients who have become U S citizens. And so I have a gentleman from Nigeria, I'd love to hear him come speak sometime about his journey to the United States of America and what he thinks about this country. But if you're going to be here, I think you have to have an understanding. Now, as far as understanding it frontwards, backwards, upside down, et cetera, that's a little difficult. That's why we have a Supreme Court to determine whether or not something is constitutional. But to have vigorous debate, and like I said, I really want to see anything that is discussed involve the zone leaders, involve our students. I want it to be a community engagement type scenario. But uh we've always been known as an innovative district, so let's do some innovating.
I think that a uh it actually goes beyond just the Constitution. You got to throw in the Declaration of Independence and the Federalist Papers. There's there's a lot of different ways to do it at the appropriate age level. We also teach civics at in the elementary schools and in the middle school. Uh so age appropriate, I think that uh this is a robust and good discussion. I'm so glad the, you know, some people have described, I know we're constitutional republic. But we're also a form of democracy where we have representative, you know, uh democracy. And, you know, someone had once said that, you know, democracy isn't pretty. As long as we maintain that decorum and respect for each other and don't impugn each other's motives, we should be able to reach some common ground in how to govern. And that should be throughout the whole United States, the state of Colorado and this board. And I I really enjoyed this discussion, by the way. Jamie Lynn?
Just a point of clarification, um the U S Constitution course that semester includes all of the things you just stated. So the Declaration of Independence, the Federalist Papers, um it includes all of that.
So how about this too? And a couple of years ago, to take uh the the, you know, pro- prospective citizens took a written citizenship exam. They took classes to learn the language, they took the citizenship exam. Part of the mastery could be taking the old written citizenship exam. That would be, that could be the final, you know? So it's just a lot of different ways to think about it, right? So you you've heard you heard discussion, I I I don't think we're at the point to direct because the real issue is do we move this policy forward for a vote? But Peter can take this discussion, come back to the board of representatives, Student Board of Representatives and teachers and zone leaders and various committees and discuss it.
I think we have a volunteer teacher for the citizenship test.
There we go, okay. So I I was told that it that the written, the old written test is more challenging than the multiple choice current test. So that's why it was recommended to me. You what? You took it six months ago? Welcome to America. And I've had friends in the Marine Corps that were actually not citizens from Kenya and other other countries and in South America and and different areas in uh in Asia and stuff. And uh, you know, they've become citizens, it's a very proud moment. And uh, okay, so do we move this particular policy forward with the minor revisions?
Yes. I would like to make more revisions to it. Oh, we can, well, I do like the the minor revisions. I mean, all we did was really change the.
That doesn't that doesn't keep the board from having further discussions. Because, you know, if you if you recall, we have to learn first on it, so, you know, we have to work towards, you know, what are the issues, what are the solutions? And then the administration would come back to us with a leading, with a lead, which is, you know, this is our recommendation. I recommend we incorporate these standards in this, we create this class for that. And we do the life skills certification like Peter's talking about. He's going to need time to do all that, that's not going to come about, you know, by next meeting. You don't have a magic wand, do you? Okay. Okay, so we'll move this forward?
We could just write it in and call it good.
Okay, you can talk to Peter about that, but we'll move this forward to the next regular meeting. Now we're on to uh the nine point five policy and procedure review, which uh is Lynette, because she knows what's going on.
These are just the um administrative updates that were provided, some name changes, a little um paragraphs, not major.
Nothing major or significant or in compliance with either Casby or legal. Okay? Anybody have any questions about any of the particular policies, Ms. Thompson?
This could just be a technical question, but under J R A dash E dash four slash J R C dash E dash four, says seventeen and under needs a parent's signature. Just a technical question, because I know we have a lot of foster kids and and in the case, we have a few emancipated students. Would that emancipation remove that age requirement? It was just a curiosity that I had. And that's the student record release request form.
My understanding is that an emancipated uh minor has adult authority to determine the contents under F R P A and that usually whatever is the standard for F R P A, which is the federal, I'm sorry, the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, usually whatever is the standard for F R P A propagates to other things like who has access to transcripts and other student information.
Does that answer your question? Do you want to move these forward to the next regular meeting? Oh, Director D'Avola, go ahead when you're ready.
Uh no, no further questions.
Okay, I recommend to move them forward.
Yes, yes.
Okay, we'll move these forward. And uh we moved uh the board subcommittee minutes to a discussion item nine point five. And uh we'll allot ten minutes to this. And go ahead, Director D'Avola, with your concerns or comments or whatever reason we moved it to discussion.
So actually I had moved it to talk specifically about the Student Board of Representatives, which is what Peter had brought up. So I think I pretty much covered what I was going to say in regards to the minutes of the Student Board of Representatives uh committee.
Hey, Lori, anything? Okay, so we will uh move on. I got, there is no additional public comment. I do want to point out something in other business. If uh did we uh get that stuff added? So if you look in other business, I included the American Legion uh handouts for uh they'll come back at a later time, but they have what they call Bo- Boy State, Girl State, which is a competition among, I think it is, high school students. And uh, you know, you got to get selected for it and then they pay for you to learn about the Constitution and government, stuff like that. So uh there are the handouts are included in this section of other business, for those who want to read about that, I gave each board member. This is what was going to be presented tonight. They also have scholarship programs. And last year, no one applied for the thousand dollar scholarships from any of our high schools. And that's leaving money on the table, folks. So get, you know, schools get the word out that there's millions of dollars left on the table for for scholarships. And they're all the small, five hundred, thousand, fifteen hundred. But it helps. So I know that our counselors have lists of these things, they may not be aware of every particular one. But almost every veteran group has scholarships for, you know, high school students or families of military connected. There are a lot of other civil organizations like the Daniels Fund. We we're one of the few school districts that had two kids receive a hundred thousand dollar scholarship last year. There are there there are scholarships available that don't come from just colleges. Talk to your school guidance counselor and uh and let's get that information out there. Another one, uh and they have some other programs, another one is from the Chamber of Commerce and they are teamed with the Daniels Fund, and this will come out later. And the there should be a letter in there and should be a calling all middle school students. So eighth graders can participate in a program that they do. And this is basically, it's called a National Civics B. It's taking place this year. So we should, as a district, sponsor these National Civics Bs, these scholarships on learning about the Constitution. And I I know the American Legion actually works with our, a lot of our N R T, N R O T C programs, how to display flags and stuff like that. But the National Civics B is put on uh Eastern Plains Chamber of Commerce, which, yes, I am a member for full disclosure. That's how I became aware of this. And I present to them once a year on school board stuff, so the next president can do that. But uh this this B is, it has cash prizes, scholarships. Okay? This contest that the American Legion puts on has a three thousand dollar first place prize. There's money out there, guys, for for kids, for 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 doing, participating in these things. And uh I would like the board, not only to comment, but afterwards, I'm going to ask you, you know, is this something that we want to promote? promote? These, these, these programs?
Yes, I think this is, just reading over the National Civics B, this is exactly what we were just talking about with, with the civics courses and the Constitution and.
See how that aligns with the agenda?
Uh, perfect, it was perfect.
Kind of amazing.
So yes, I've wholeheartedly agree that the district should, should promote this, support it, put it on the district website. Provide incentives for schools to promote it at their school, things like that.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that my husband's Surtoma, um, group also has like essay cons- contests for the Constitution and different topics. And they also give scholarships. But I think it's really good to begin to kind of pull all this together. And we have an amazing Student Board of Representatives. And I think they could also help get the word out about those opportunities because, uh, our Student Board of Representatives are pretty amazing. And I think talking student to student, they could spread this word even further.
And, but I had, uh, you, you also as a board want, would like to promote this within the district, okay? So I, I, I kind of think that's guidance to the super superintendent. Okay. He's awake. Eight twenty-five? Less than two hours.
I have other business.
Oh, you do?
You didn't ask if anyone else had other business.
We're not adjourned. Sit.
Uh, wait, Peter, don't go anywhere. This is definitely for you. Okay, every, every, uh, board meeting, I'm gonna continue to bring this up until I have something in my hands about the superintendent evaluation. Making sure we have something updated on, on that. We need it.
I haven't completed. It's on the, uh, from agenda setting, it's on the work session. So that's, I've got it done actually after you and I talked, that was the last thing.
So is it on the next agenda? Okay, a next agenda?
Right, Lynette? Lynette, Lynette and Peter agree?
That's wonderful.
Therefore it is so.
And then, uh, I also, John, I wanted to pick your brain too on the discussion with the curriculum waivers. Did you completely agree that that will be a discussion that the new board is going to have for those, uh, waivers? For the zone leaders?
I, I was prepared to do that, but I defer to you and Lori on that. And I, I think Rick is the same. Uh, I'm ready to make, I, I, I can make a decision on it. I think, I think that you also can make a decision on it. I just, I don't think that curriculum approval should be waived. That's my only point on, on everything that they showed us. Curriculum approval and, and any calendar changes are very, you know, they're minor.
I agree and I think that's something that we should vote on, um, as soon as possible.
So I was thinking, uh, we're gonna have to sit down, uh, come up with a schedule for the regular meeting in December, which is gonna coincide right around the Casby, uh, conference and business meeting. Uh, one of you will have to vote or whoever you decide will have to vote. You know, be the delegate to the business meeting. That's where you vote on, uh, will vote on the bylaws. They'll vote on, uh, Casby board members. It's really important that we get every school district that can possibly attend. And I, I, I worked at where we can do remote voting. So there were about sixteen school districts throughout the state that attended remotely. And usually people aren't really that worried about the delegate assembly. They, they showed up en masse. A hundred and five uh, Boards of Education showed up last December. And that was, uh, thirty more than the seventy-five that showed up at the delegate assembly in October. And we had seventy-four this time around. So it, it made it more convenient for some, but the business meeting is really where, where it's at. And once they learn how important these resolutions can be, they should start attending those as well. Because we had, we had some resolutions that I spoke against and did not win. I won most of the ones I spoke for, but not all of them. And, uh, one of the districts used our resolution in support of capitalism as an amendment to someone else's. And it surprised me because I didn't find out until he, uh, uh, two minutes before he presented it and wanted a second. Anyway, uh, Lori?
Just a quick thank you to you and I believe Tiffany Upchurch in School District Thirty-eight for pushing through the remote attendance, which gave a lot of our rural districts the opportunity to participate in the Colorado Association of School Boards. So I just wanted to thank you for spearheading that and, um, and opening it up to more voices.
Did I answer your question though?
Uh, yes, so I would move to, uh, uh, to place on the agenda for next meeting a vote for the, um, waivers.
And, and, uh, the next meeting being the November regular session?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Graham and Ms. DeVola, may, may, may I try again to explain why that, why that vote is going to end up being immaterial? You can't separate, the, the innovation waiver or the innovation application is indivisible. So if, if your point is to vote on it, you'll be rejecting the entire innovation waiver, which means you'll be rejecting things that are embedded in practice already. You can't just reject the curriculum waiver. You have to reject the entire waiver. Which means that staffing models that we've already committed to, positions that we've already committed to, um, curriculum decisions that we've already committed to and, and made purchases based on, you will be disassembling a decade and a half of practice in the district. And you are absolutely welcome to do that. But I want it to be very clear that you don't have the option, you don't have a line item veto on innovation waivers. Nor do you have the ability to say, well, bring it back to us just without the curriculum waivers. Because that's a different innovation waiver application, which requires another staff vote, another community vote, another administrative vote before it even gets to you. And so the, the normal process, having given this clear signal that you don't intend to approve curriculum waivers. We discussed this last time and I, I left with a, a different understanding than I think you're wanting to move forward with here. My understanding was that if the zone leaders or principals wanted to re-initiate an innovation plan without curriculum waivers, they could do that. But to do that, they've gotta go through a statutory process. Isn't my process or yours? It's defined in statute. If they bring it to you without following that statutory process, then it's an invalid waiver on the beginning. And some of these waivers have to go for the state board to review. So it puts us in a bind if you ask us to bring forward a waiver with the intent of voting it down, knowing that you are going to disassemble positions, practices and curriculum commitments that we've already made.
And I do understand that. I think you understand that as well, right?
Part of it. Um, I, yeah, I understand. I just think that we're, we're skirting the issue. Um, to be honest. Um, and this is something that this board has been, uh, adamantly talking about of making sure that we have that final stamp of approval on curriculum. And, uh, it's, it sounds like it's going to be your, your guys' choice of whether or not we have a say in that by re- by refusing to take that piece out of your waivers.
I, I would word it differently. So what, what Peter's basically saying is, uh, he's recommending that we either approve or don't approve, but if we don't approve, there will be ramifications. So, uh, if they were, if we were to direct them to take that piece out, they would have to start the process all over, which is a ninety day something process, right?
It, it, it's whatever it takes. And it's, it's not a refusal. It's, it's an observation that, um, we can do exactly what you're saying. But if we bring the current set of innovation waivers for a vote and you vote them down, then we have to undo a lot. If you say, bring us, bring us new innovation waiver packages, those have to go through a series of votes. And, and let me be blunt. If this is controversial enough with any of those segments, parents, staff or administrators, and they don't vote on it, it doesn't matter how badly you want it. Because the statute says you have to get a majority of all of these different groups to bring it forward. So if, if what you really want to do as a board is assert your primacy on curriculum decisions, you can pass a resolution and you can say in that resolution, this will apply to innovation waivers going forward, this will apply to budget priorities going forward. You can, you can make the same statement that you, that you want to make without forcing the, the disassembly. And you can say, now, a- as we observed last time when we had the longer discussion about this, these waivers are still in effect, these innovation plans are still in effect, they're still listed on the, uh, Colorado Department of Education website as active waivers. And so we're not, we're not talking about rejecting an application for new waivers, we're talking about rescinding existing waivers, which the board can do. I'm just faithfully reporting to you that that's gonna be very disruptive. And while you can reject what has been in place, you cannot compel a zone leader or a principal or a staff to, to choose and approve the things that you want them to choose and approve.
Okay, so also, uh, last time we talked about how we, we cannot, we don't have line item veto. So we couldn't, and I'm, you know, this is lawyer time, lawyering up. We can approve these innovation plans en masse and then retract an element of it, is what I was told last meeting, right? When were we told that? Or we needed further looking into that. So you, you, you can't dissect it until after it's approved and then you can remove the, that waiver. That specific portion of it. So that's how we get less disruptive, but let's ask the lawyer.
The lawyer doesn't like giving legal advice in public meetings because there are some very arcane and, and particular legal processes here that I would like to discuss with the board. So to that end, um, and by the way, Brad Miller, I'm a lawyer for the district. Um, Jamie Lynn, I'd like to have a conversation with you, talk you through some, some of that. So let's just offline talk about that. And then I will work with Peter and, and make sure that you guys have some clarity at the next meeting, but I don't like to off the cuff do the legal stuff.
I understand that.
Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, Jamie Lynn?
Just a couple of things I want to note, um, this has been something that I've brought up for the next, the last three meetings. And I believe at that very first meeting when we're having this discussion, um, we were going to have some sort of conversation, um, et cetera, in order to understand this on a deeper level. But it seems like we've continually skirted around the issue instead of actually tackling it. Um, and so from, I'm gonna keep bringing this up until we have, we have some sort of, hey, this is exactly what we can do in order to make sure that the board is able to do what the board has been put on the board to do.
I, I think part of the issue is we, we have it actually as a board taking a consensus to task them. We've discussed it. But let's, what I would recommend is we, we task Mr. Miller for legal advice. If that has to play, take place one-on-one or at a executive session to receive legal advice on that, you tell me what we have to do. Uh, Mr. Hilton and Mr. Miller can collaborate on, you know, what, you know, what, what you guys were talking about. But let's, uh, at the next special session, which is October, uh, twenty-fifth, uh, let's have you guys inform us by then whether we are going to vote on this Nov- in the November meeting or we're gonna hold it off. Uh, or we are going to, you know, if, if I can approve, I, I don't mind approving them all just as is and then make an emotion to rescind any waiver that, uh, does not receive board approval uh, for curriculum.